I now call the regular Des Moines City Council meeting for August 17th to order. And with that, I'll have Councilmember Steinmetz lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. Let the record reflect that six of us are present. Councilmember Pennington cannot make it. He previously spoke to me, and so I'm looking for a motion.
I'm over to approve his excuse.
Second, all is in favor of excusal. Okay, motion passes six zero for his excusal. All right, with that, we're going to change the agenda just slightly, obviously, with the crowd in the room. And I'm going to turn it over to the city manager's report. Michael, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Great to see you. The first thing on the agenda is we're going to have the swearing in of our new police chief. So I ask Judge Leon to come forward and Chief Gailey. Chief, that's going to be your most difficult task. At any rate, counsel, a couple of things. Bonnie will be setting up times in the near future for each of you to meet one-on-one with the chief, kind of learn his philosophy, express your concerns. So we look forward to that. Chief, if you have any words you'd like to say? Help yourself, whatever. Although I think we have to record it, so, sorry.
Hi. Thank you very much, Mayor Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Buxton, honorable council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity. It's great to see the room filled. First and foremost, to the men and women of the Des Moines Police Department, I stand ready to support you and help you with anything you need. My first and foremost responsibility is to tear down walls so that you can do your jobs well. So that's my first responsibility. The room is filled with a lot of people that if I started naming names and telling stories, I'd get choked up on recognition. To my family, my parents, to my wife and children, my in-laws that joined me today, thank you for everything. Additionally, in the room are some important figures in my life. Several of the members of the very first crew that I served with, with the State Patrol back in 2001 are here in the room, including the first person that I ever went on a ride-along with. So, you know, I love that leadership theory of thinking of your life as a huge ship in the ocean going in a direction. And if you make small little degrees of positive changes at the beginning, you can end up somewhere that you didn't even think you were going to end up at the end. Additionally, in the room are a lot of members of our different Des Moines neighborhoods, many of who sat on my panel when I interviewed. So thank you for representing all of our Des Moines neighborhoods well. And thank you to all the members of the Des Moines Police Department that joined me, especially Assistant Chief Coey, Assistant Chief Richards. They are pillars in the community, and they've taken great care of the department. So thank you all. Have a safe evening, and I will do my best for you.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, no doubt, wants to say a few words, but I do want to mention the chief and his family and friends and associates are going to go out to dinner and celebrate. So we'd like to keep it short and let them have the opportunity to do that. It's always great to see PD here. Thank you, guys, for supporting the chief. I have to acknowledge Assistant Chief Coey and Assistant Chief Richards for their steadfast support of the department in the interim between when the former chief left. And we look forward to your reign. So, thank you. Counsel, if you have any comments?
I'm going to start on the backside. Councilmember Harris, did you want to say a few words?
Go get them. That's it.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Chief Gailey, we're really glad you're here. I think you're going to be an excellent chief. Looking forward to working with you. And I also want to express my appreciation to Deputy Chief Coey and Richardson. I think you guys have done a wonderful job just keeping everything together, and I appreciate that very much. So, thank you. Look forward to working with you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm impressed with your pronunciation of the word "Des Moines." So I'm sure somebody will correct you, but that's the one I like. I, you got this. Thanks for coming aboard. Thanks for choosing us. We're happy to have you.
Councilmember Nutty.
Yeah, and probably going to sound redundant, but Richards and Coey, thank you for all of taking the reins. Glad to have you aboard. Look forward to getting to know you. As these guys know, I do a lot of ride-alongs, and I'm doing another one tomorrow night. So hopefully, we can chat. And a huge supporter of the police department, so look forward to getting to know you. Congratulations.
Councilman Buxton.
To keep it short and sweet, welcome.
I'm excited to have you. You know, it's obviously transition. Obviously, we want to thank Chief Thomas for his work and, you know, Assistant Chiefs Richards and Coey. We just say thank you for everything you've done. I think you're entering into a challenge. We're a wonderful community, and I love that you thought so when you came here, when we spoke, you thought so. I will say that I don't think, I think being a police officer now is the most challenging job in the entire universe. Some people could beg to differ, but I do. And you're here to lead us, and we're looking for, you know, some great work. And obviously, that will be reflected in a crew. You have a, I think you're going to find out as you assess the team that you have an excellent police force that these guys have worked so hard to do. And I'm looking forward to seeing you make your mark in the city. So thank you and welcome. And I just want to say to the family, we appreciate you putting Tim, you know, in our city to, you know, be part of our community and stuff. And I really invite you guys to be part of that community as well. We'd love to see you around and get to know you as well. So we look forward to building a relationship together. So welcome, Onbiap, and all his friends and those that work with him. We also say welcome to our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. There's one last thing. We thought that in terms of succession planning, one of the best examples we've ever seen is the slide Bonnie's about to put up. That was from your going-away-on-the-partying party in Redmond, so. So either they're welcoming to Des Moines, or they're happy to get rid of him. Anyways, thank you all very much. Maybe we'll take a few minutes, let the room clear. I think that.
We want to do a couple photos. It's okay. We'd like you to get him with counsel here. Okay? Okay, let's get on with the meeting. All right, thank you. Michael, please continue.
Yeah, thank you. So we have a few new staff members that we would like to introduce, both to the community and to the council. So with that, I think first off, I'll ask our Human Resources Director, A.J., to come up and do an introduction.
Good evening, Council. Okay, there we go. Good evening, Council. Good evening, community. I'd like to introduce our newest member of our HR team. Her name is Nari Osler. She is our HR analyst. Nari's a Seattle native, though she now lives down in Tacoma. She brings a wealth of experience in both human resources and payroll. She gained her experience primarily in the private sector, working at a lot of small startup companies and a global company that we all know, DocuSign. But she's ready to learn about the public sector. She's also an accomplished author. Nari has several published books, works of fiction, self-help books. I haven't picked that one up yet. Maybe she'll slide it on my desk, I don't know. And many work-related articles. So I just wanted to introduce Nari, and if you guys could join us in welcoming her to the city of Des Moines.
Thank you, A.J. Nari, welcome. It's a pleasure now to introduce our Director of Court Administration, Melissa Patrick, who's going to introduce a new employee.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Michael, and the community. I would like to introduce our newest court martial that joined our judicial branch earlier this year. This is Tunde Deramola. He is also a court martial for King County District Court. So he comes to us with plenty of experience. We have enjoyed having him here, and he's provided the extra level of security for everyone in the city while entering the city hall complex. So if you could all give him a round of applause for joining us.
Thank you, Tunde. As I've mentioned before, with Brady, his colleague, they're the first people I see every morning when I walk in, so it has a huge impact on everybody else throughout the day. So it's always great to see you, Tunde. Welcome. The next one is an incredible pleasure. And so we had our HR Director, A.J., and our Chief Administrative Officer, Bonnie, take a trip to Spokane yesterday. So Bonnie is going to tell you about that, and A.J.'s going to be at the podium.
First and foremost, we didn't get arrested, so that was pretty good. But as Michael mentioned, A.J. and I flew over to Spokane and met Nicole Nordholm, who was attending the Washington City County Management Association's annual conference. And we specifically flew over to attend the award reception, where on behalf of the city, we accepted the 2023 Innovations in Local Government Sustainability Program Award. This award recognized as a local government that has successfully achieved continuous improvement through performance management, performance budgeting, lean management, strategic planning, or other transitional tool. Spearheaded by the city manager, with contributions from members of our executive staff, we are delighted to have received this award, which we feel acknowledges the excellent work your city administration has accomplished on your behalf and that of our community. We were the only city in the state of Washington to receive this award for the year, and A.J. and I were very honored to be the ones to go get it.
We want to do a picture. Sorry. We're going to do it again.
Photo opportunity. Come on, let's go down here with you guys. Any of the staff, come on up. You need to be part of the picture.
Who's going to take it? I'm just kidding. Oh, that guy can do it.
Mayor, that concludes the senior's report for tonight. Thank you.
Well, Michael, that's some exciting news, and congratulations to you and your staff. We know the good work you do. It's great to see you be recognized amongst your peers and colleagues in the industry. So all credit goes to your staff, and I'm always impressed with the caliber of which you operate, and so do your staff. So thank you. I saw a few of you back there. Mr. Friend, you probably should have been up in the photo, too. Can't forget about you, man. Finance isn't exciting, but it's necessary, right? I live in that world, too, so I know what he's talking about. All right, before we continue, I have a quick statement. It's concerning the Travel Inn on Pac Highway. The city learned in late 2022 that the Travel Inn motel at 26225 Pacific Highway South was being operated by Catholic Community Services as a temporary homeless shelter. After conducting an investigation, it was determined that this type, that this type of use is not permitted at this site, given its proximity to a local school and therefore not in compliance with the city's supporting housing standards. City staff notified CCS and the property owner in a memo in March of 2023. Since that time, the city has continued to inform CCS of the violations and seek and sought voluntary compliance. The city was ultimately required to issue a citation against CCS and the property owner for continued violation of the city municipal code. After that citation was issued, city staff met with CCS leadership in an attempt to help CCS find another suitable location for this service. Rather than proceeding together as partners and working toward a solution, CCS has now decided to fight this issue in the media. I was recently contacted by the Seattle Times reporter, who is working on a story about this situation. City staff has assisted in providing the requested information, and we are committed to making sure the entire story is told. The city partners with a number of agencies in our work to address the homeless crisis, and it is unfortunate that one of those partners has decided to take an adversarial approach rather than working in good faith on legal solutions. I must reiterate, the city is committed to participating in a regional approach to homelessness, but it must include transparency and collaboration with any agency or government entity, and must be in accordance with the laws of the state and our municipal code, and there cannot be exceptions to that. Are there any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
Has anyone signed up for public comment? Okay. It is now time for public comment. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You will have three minutes to speak. And our only person signed up today is Ms. K. Van. Ben, you have the floor. And you'll have three minutes.
I just want to introduce the camp snack shop that I started about 10 weeks ago, 10, 11 weeks ago, down in Redondo Beach. This is a childhood dream of mine to have a snack or a corner store, and this is the closest and the cheapest that I can do. So I got ice cream, drinks, snacks, candy bars, I got coffee. I'm working on espresso and latte, and they asked for that, but I have to work with the health department. So welcome down. I'm donating my 100% of my tips to our police foundation, and then the other half to our fire department. And then I do have a question. I apologize for my ignorance of, you know, the politics parts or the rules or regulations of our city law. This is my first year ever have been, you know, coming into these meetings. I'm curious about the cameras, the speed cameras that we have down there. I know that there's posters up there right now to remind people that the speed cameras is coming. Originally, the, I was, the information I got was the camera would be on Redondo Beach Way, just up the road there, and then one down on both ways, both directions. And the other one, all the way down at the boatwalk, I think, was right as you come down that hill. But there's posters that within the park? I'm curious if that location of the speed camera has been moved from that, because there's no posters on Redondo Beach Way, but they're on 281st, where I'm at, and along the boatwalk. I was curious, why is it in the park instead of right before the camera? So there's one in the middle of where the hump is on Redondo Beach Way, halfway down the boatwalk. And I'm curious, why what that one is there? And then why is not before the cameras stationed? And then there's one in front of my house on 281st and about between 8th and 9th, but then there's one right as you take that curve onto Redondo Beach Drive. So I'm curious if someone can direct me to that information. I really appreciate it. And I'm squeezing right in. I'm one of many who does not belong to any groups down there, and that's why I come here every month to speak on it. If you can share that information, that'd be great.
Thank you, Ms. Van. The city manager will respond.
Yeah, Ms. Van, we always appreciate your comments. Of course, tonight, I told our Public Works Director, unlikely any issues will come up, so take the evening off. So I think what I need to do is have him get in touch with you either tomorrow or beginning of the week and kind of lay out for you the answers to those questions. It's fairly tightly regulated. As we said, we're probably the first city in the state to take advantage of the law, this new law and this opportunity. But relative to regulatory requirements, I can have Andrew contact you and give you an update. Yeah?
Thank you. All right. We will move on to new business. This is a time for the sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Council members can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any council members have new business they would like to propose? Seeing none, we will move on to board and committee reports, and we will start with Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's been a busy summer. Just last, was it this last weekend or the weekend before, we were at the Cambodian Festival, which is a cultural festival that's held at Saltwater State Park now several years going on, although it took a break for COVID, and now it has started back up again. And it's just a wonderful opportunity to see this community displaying sort of the cultural aspects of everything. There was some wonderful food. There was music, very interesting music going on. And, you know, we got to meet the counselor general from the Cambodian, not the embassy, but the council that's up in Seattle. And it was really just a wonderful time. Additionally, you know, we've been down to the farmer's market on several occasions. Everybody knows about that. There are more. Everybody knows about that. There are more events coming up and there have been concerts in the park. So and I think the movies have started on Friday nights, haven't they? One more. So, you know, there's still a lot of community building events and I encourage everybody to get out and, you know, participate in those. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Councilmember Steinmetz. Moving on to Councilmember Oxiger.
I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Nettie.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I would, I watched the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting last night and I would just encourage the entire community to watch it. I found it fascinating. I'm going to be thinking about it for a good while. An unasked-for piece of advice would be the participants. I think you would find it valuable, even if you took meticulous notes, to watch it again and, you know, just see the commentary. I certainly find it valuable going back and listening to things again. And it's an odd thing. You guys put in an hour and 40 of extremely thoughtful discourse at a very high level. And I want you to know, I appreciate it, even though you're getting nothing. It's never over till it's over, but we're 28 minutes into this and with any luck, that'll be the fastest 2:50 I ever got out of this. And that's it.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would, he's enjoying his celebratory evening with his family, but Chief Gailey, I am very excited to have him aboard. Looking forward to getting to know him better and I think, I think he's going to be a gift to our community. About community events, there was a couple others. They had a touch a truck up at Stephen J. Underwood a couple of weeks ago. Ton of families. You had to park a ways away. I always say, if you've got to park a long ways away and walk, you're going to something cool. And there was a lot, a lot of kids, had a great morning. Music in the park's been talked about. There's one more next Wednesday. I think it's Abba Graffs. It's an Abba cover band. And so a huge attendance last night. This is a great, exciting community gathering point. So hope to see you there. I do want to reiterate, there's a little bit of messaging out about our comp plan and there's a survey going out there. Our staff has done a lot of work. We have a contract, a contract company that's helping us out with this. So it's called, it's a survey and we're looking for feedback from the community. If you go to a website, it's called Imagine Des Moines and click and you can do a survey. It's very simple. It is limited in its ability to take a lot of commentary, but feel free to write in, to email us if you'd like. But that's not the only way. Also wanted to clarify that we're getting our feedback from the community. This team, between our staff and our contractor, is reaching out to the community in several different ways, going to events, going to the farmer's market, going to parks, reaching out to the community in a lot of different ways. So there will be some more community interaction. So I wanted to assure, we're trying every kind of available way to reach out to get feedback while we're doing this process. One other thing I'd like to take a moment to do, I was at a coffee with the mayor the other day and I appreciate that he does that. He's working about every month to have a time to have coffee with people in the community and taking advantage of building relationship with a business. It's always in a business. And, you know, we as council members a lot of times don't get, you know, there's staff and the community. Anyway, I want to offer my appreciation for our mayor. There are a lot of things that he does that nobody knows that he does. He has made connections out in the community and with our staff, our community agencies, community leaders, business leaders. He puts people together constantly. He's super supportive of our businesses and community members. He gives a lot. And I don't, I don't think that he, there's a lot of opportunities to thank him like this. So I wanted to just take a moment to do it. I watch him. I see what he does beyond the scenes and I'm very appreciative of his time and effort, passion and heart into this community. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I would share my sentiments with you and several other council members, of course. I know you all work very hard in the community. Most of my reports have been taken. There's a couple of things. I attended on August 9th, the Justin Parks 60th anniversary. It was wonderful. They had rock and roll band and nothing like 80-year-old people shaking their booty, you might say. It was quite the event, but it was a lot of fun, well-attended and had a great time. Not only did I go to the Cambodian Festival also, but later that evening, I was at a fundraiser for Ugandan women and they were raising money to educate and teach these women trades because basically their future outlook is very poor otherwise. So it was very informative and made me thankful I was born in the United States of America. Again, coffee with the mayor was wonderful. We had about 16, 17, maybe 20 people and it was a very nice conversation. It was, it was hot in the afternoon and it was 90, so nobody was drinking coffee. We were going to applaud anybody that showed up drinking hot coffee. But it was a nice time and agreed. Obviously, the currents want to come out. We'll have the next dates and I invite you to join and come and have a nice conversation and get some questions answered and voice concerns. As was mentioned, I had the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting last night. My compliments to our consultant. I was impressed. They were well-prepared. We'd asked them to do a couple of homework assignments. And the first one was the three biggest concerns or issues that they felt need to be addressed or in their neighborhood. And then we asked them all to do the three biggest issues they saw in the city. And very great, well-researched and you could tell that they talked to a lot of their neighbors exactly what we tried to accomplish and achieve. A few of them are here today and I want to say thank you. And very good discussion and I was very happy. Our consultant will be preparing those documents and so forth and of course, the video as well to give to council and also for staff to review and incorporate in our future. But I, it was very thoughtful. I was very impressed. We have a great selection of people, very diverse, and I was very happy. A couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention is on this Sunday, and I'm not sure what time it is, but there's the theater in the park at 5:00 PM. So I think it's Siberian Actors Guild or something along those lines puts on a performance and I encourage you to go down there. So it's like a version of the music in the park, but it's theater. And I've always found it to be a great event, so please show up. And then, not to be remiss, on August 26th will be the Blues and Brews Festival that's held by Rotary. And that's an awesome event that everybody should go to if you get the chance. I know tickets are available for sale. The next meeting, we are going to have a special meeting. It's going to be next Wednesday, August 23rd. It's going to be a study session. So that's different than we normally do. So I just want to, and that'll be at 6:00 PM. So I just want to make sure that's made clear here. And of course, it'll be announced out probably tomorrow. So I just want you to be aware of that. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
I have Councilmember Nettie with the motion. I have second from Councilmember Steinmetz. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned. Everybody, have a nice weekend.